Good afternoon, assembled here members of the public. Welcome to the work session to discuss policing policy in Patton Township. The date is June 25th. This discussion would be continued on June 1st. Those of you who would like to comment, you'll note there's a phone number up front. You can call that will go direct to our manager Doug Erickson and he can put you on speakerphone or relay the message. At this time, we'll start the meeting with a pledge. And the flag is over here. I invite those who are able to join us, stand in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I would like to give special thanks to Chief Jolly, who is doing above and beyond his weekly daily call of duty and taking a close look at policing policies as well as to other board members who are attending this special session. And we have a guest in the audience who's come also, and I'm assuming others. So at this point, we, I will turn it over to Chief Jolly and Sergeant Albright.
Yes, so thank you first of all, and really, I want to thank the whole board for giving us the opportunity to discuss our use of force policies and procedures here in Patton Township. We think it's a, it's great that you're interested in learning more and want to get educated about our policies and procedures. I have with me today a couple of my sergeants. Sergeant Scott Stroud is here in the board meeting room. He is our resident expert in use of force and defensive tactics. He is a certified instructor for taser, for baton, and he's been for pepper spray as well in the past. But he does basically most of or all of the use of force training that our department goes through each year annually. Also via Zoom, we have Sergeant Sean Albright. He is our accreditation manager. And so he is pretty much in charge of making sure that all of our policies are up to date and all the standards are met. Just as a reminder, we are accredited by PLEAC, which is the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. We were first accredited back in 2012. And basically, again, that just means that our policies and procedures are in line with what the state recommends. And every three years, we have to show proof that we are continuing to comply with those. So we have assessors that come to our agency to check through all of our policies, again, to make sure they're in compliance with what the state is recommending at that time. And then we have to show proofs via incident reports that we have complied with what we say that we're doing. So again, we have to do that every three years. In fact, January of 2021 is a reaccreditation year for us, so we'll be going through that process again. Haven't had any problems in the past and don't anticipate any in the future. All of our policies are very solid and up to date with everything that the state has for us right now. So that's the introductions. I'm going to start off real quick with a PowerPoint. I did disseminate our use of force policy to all of the board members, a redacted copy. And I also did, Mr. Erickson made it available to the public by putting it on our website and on Facebook, I believe. So I don't want to belabor this, but I also felt that it was important for anybody who isn't aware of what those policies are. So I'm going to kind of hit the high points of each of our use of force policies. So starting out on the first slide, just so you're aware too, the number before the chapter or the title is just the general order numbers. It's basically our way of cataloging everything, so that's what that number is. It doesn't really mean anything else besides us being able to keep track of it. But for use of force, and this is, most of these slides basically is the verbiage right out of our policies. And I'll give you a couple of little bit extra explanation where I feel appropriate. But everyone shall be treated with courtesy and the dignity due any human being to the extent that such treatment is allowed by the suspect's actions. Our personnel shall never use a greater degree of force than that is lawful, reasonable, and necessary. Such reasonable and necessary force may be used to effect an arrest, to overcome unlawful resistance, to prevent an escape from custody, to neutralize an unlawful resistance, or to neutralize an unlawful assault upon an officer or another person. Very importantly, the use of physical force will end immediately when resistance ceases or when the arrest has been accomplished. We have somebody in handcuffs and they are no longer a threat to the officer, but there is no reason to apply any more force to that individual. I'm not saying that a person who's handcuffed cannot resist and cannot fight. I mean, obviously, we've seen before persons who had been handcuffed and continued to kick, spit, headbutt. So there's different ways that they can continue to assault an officer or continue to resist. But generally, once we've accomplished the arrest, the force, the use of force is done then. Okay? So the emphasis for our use of force is always gaining control of the situation. We're never looking for submission. We're looking to gain control of the situation. And our personnel know that they shall never mentally or physically abuse any person they come in contact with or take into custody or under control. The justification for our use of force is limited to what reasonably appears to be the facts known or perceived by the officer at the time they decide to use such force. Officers using force must be able to articulate the need and the justification for the use of force that they decided to use, which level they decided to use, and why that level was selected. And that is going to have to be documented in the use of force report at a later, later on in their shift that day. So we talk, and in fact, actually, our guest had brought up the eight can't wait proposals that were put forward and nationwide, every agency is reviewing, but by Campaign Zero, we were in compliance with everything. However, we did find this one spot where it wasn't specifically spelled out in our policy. And our rules of conduct, unbecoming or immoral conduct by an officer addressed this. However, we felt it wasn't specific, so why not put it into our policy? It was a perfect time. So as of, actually, a week ago, we added that in our use of force policy, an officer, regardless of their rank or seniority, shall intervene when they see others using force that is unlawful, unreasonable, or unnecessary for the specific situation. This applies to officers, employees from other departments or agencies who could be coming in and assisting a Patton Township Police Department officer. The officer who intervenes shall immediately report this incident to their supervisor so an investigation can be initiated and/or the proper agency notified. And we thought it was important to include other departments or other agencies. Our officers can be out assisting children in youth services, LifeLink EMS. So if we see, you know, maybe an EMT acting inappropriately, our officers by policy are required to intervene and make a report of that.
Okay.
And that is one of the policies of the can't wait, specifically to have that in. That was the only one that we were kind of deficient in. We didn't have, again, specific language.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Some definitions that are important. Deadly force. So deadly force is any force that under the circumstances in which it is used is readily capable of causing death or serious bodily injury. Serious bodily injury is that bodily injury which creates a substantial risk of death or which causes serious permanent disfigurement or protracted loss or impairment of the function of any bodily member or organ. Less lethal force is force which is neither intended nor likely to cause death or serious bodily injury. And non deadly force is any force other than what would be considered deadly force. All right. Move forward one there Doug.
No, I'm sorry.
That's right. So the use of force to affect lawful objectives, the justification basically for our use of force comes from the PA Crimes Code in Title 18, Chapter 5. Under general principles, it describes the circumstances in which use of force is justified. So in that section of our policy, we get into our use of force continuum. I'm not going to talk about that. Sergeant Stroud is actually going to present that. So just so you're aware, that's where this comes into play. Another thing that comes in though, that we added again about a year ago to our policy is specific wording on de-escalation. So we actually added in the forward one, the definition for de-escalation right out of our policy is taking action or communicating verbally or nonverbally during a potential force encounter in an attempt to stabilize the situation and reduce the immediacy of the threat so that more time, options, and resources can be called upon to resolve the situation without the use of force or with a reduction in the force necessary. And our policy for that definition is that our officers shall use de-escalation techniques and other alternatives to higher levels of force consistent with their training whenever possible and appropriate before resorting to force and to reduce the need for force. Obviously, our thought process here is if we don't have to physically confront somebody or physically touch somebody, our officers won't get hurt, the person we're dealing with won't get hurt, any innocent bystanders won't be affected at all. So if we can verbally de-escalate something, that is obviously the desired outcome of any kind of potential use of force incident. Another part of the eight can't wait proposals refers to chokeholds and carotid restraints. So under our control and compliance, not to steal Sergeant Strauss's thunder, but in that portion of our use of force continuum, we do have wording in there that the use of carotid restraint or other chokeholds are specifically and strictly prohibited for use by the Patton Township Police Department personnel. That's been in since we got accredited and even before we were accredited. So well over 10 years, we've had that wording in our policy. There is an exception though, and basically it's if deadly force is permissible and no other alternatives are available to the officer depending on the circumstances and they're in a situation where they must defend either their own life or the life of another is the exception when they could potentially use a chokehold or a carotid restraint. Any other time, they're strictly prohibited by our policy. Okay, so deadly force. And Sergeant Stroud is actually going to touch on some landmark case law that came from the Supreme Court in Tennessee versus Garner. However, just to give you the quick textbook version of what the Crimes Code says, gives us again the justification for deadly force, comes again from Title 18, section, or Chapter 5, Section 508 of the Crimes Code. And it provides for when the lawful and justified use of deadly force by a police officer only when they believe that, number one, that the action is in defense of human life. We call it idle in defense of life, including the officer's own life in the defense of any person in immediate danger of serious physical injury when he or she reasonably believes both that such force is necessary to prevent the arrest from being defeated by resistance or escape, and also that the person to be arrested has committed or has attempted a forcible felony, and we'll get into what the definition of that is here in a minute, or is attempting to escape and possesses a deadly weapon, or otherwise indicates that they will endanger human life or inflict serious bodily injury unless arrested without delay. So all of those things need to be checked off before deadly force can be considered or used. So a couple of important definitions based on that is, one is reasonable belief, which is defined, the facts or circumstances that officer knows or should know that there's, that are such as to cause an ordinary and prudent person to act or think in a similar way under similar circumstances. And then, like I said, forcible felony includes the crimes of murder, voluntary manslaughter, rape, robbery, kidnapping, involuntary deviant sexual intercourse, arson, endangering persons, aggravated assault causing serious bodily injury are the crimes that are considered forcible felonies in Pennsylvania. So shoot to stop. Our officers are trained to stop whatever deadly act is occurring. We do not train anybody to shoot to kill. That's been a term that's been put out there before. But our officers fire their weapon to stop and incapacitate an assailant from completing a potentially deadly act. Where practical, again, another pillar or another proposal from eight can't wait, before resorting to deadly force, a verbal warning should be given. Again, that's wording right out of our policy. And then, again, another proposal, it's already in our policy, is an officer will utilize deadly force only on another, only when legally justified, when the need to do so is strong and compelling, only as a last resort, and when lower levels of force have been ineffective or would be inappropriate given the threat level confronting the officer. When a firearm or other form of deadly force is used, it must be with the realization that the death of another human may occur. Warning shots, display, and discharge of weapons. This covers another proposal from eight can't wait, that our officers are prohibited from discharging firearms under the following circumstances. If it appears that an innocent bystander or other officers potentially could be harmed from a gunshot, they are not allowed to discharge a firearm. The proposal for eight can't wait is at or moving, at or from, I'm sorry, a moving vehicle, except as the ultimate measure of self-defense and/or defense of another when the suspect is using deadly force. And then, we also cannot use it or do not use it as a warning shot. We do not try to elicit somebody to stop what they're doing by firing a weapon to, you know, as a warning. The only exception to a warning shot is to summon aid, and that's only when more contemporary, you know, means are unavailable or, you know, cell phone is dead, radio is not working, whatever the case may be, they can use it to summon aid if they need. Just to touch on some of the weapons that we have that are less lethal, we have oleoresin capsicum, which is pepper spray, beanbag projectiles, expandable batons, and then our officers do carry also the X2 taser, which is an electro muscular disruption device. Sergeant Stroud, again, will probably touch on these a little bit more in depth and is an instructor for those as well. So he'll talk a little bit more about those here in a little bit. Medical aid after use of force. So our officers shall arrange for emergency medical, emergency medical services to examine, treat, and or transport a subject to a medical facility if the force used by police personnel caused injury, injury is suspected or injury is alleged. In certain circumstances, appropriate medical attention could be as basic as just an officer monitoring that person to make sure that their condition doesn't get worse and that we do see improvement. For OC or pepper spray, evaluation by EMS should be initiated without delay where practical. Ms. Robb sent me an email and brought up a very good point. When we use pepper spray, the decontamination period for that is about a half hour at least, depending on, you know, what you have available to you. All of our officers who are trained to carry pepper spray are exposed to it, so they are sprayed when we first get hired. And I can tell you from experience, it does, your face burns, you have mucus running, runny eyes, itchy eyes, and for about a half hour, you want to flush your eyes out with water and fresh cool air if you can. So that, that one is probably less, definitely right now is less desirable with COVID. We definitely would not want to use that necessarily in a crowded area where now you have people coughing and, you know, possibly spreading continued germs. So it's, again, it's not a very desirable option for force right now if we needed to use something. Again, we do have the taser and getting for medical aid after the use of a taser, as soon as reasonable and practical, we do call EMS to evaluate a person who has been exposed to a taser. That, the recovery is much more quick, usually within 30 seconds to a minute, the person is back to, back to a normal, how they were feeling just before exposed to the taser. And beanbags, any off, any individual subject who struck by a beanbag ammunition will be transported to the hospital to be evaluated at a medical facility. Use of force reporting, we discussed this just a little bit at the beginning, but our force is broken down into four different categories. The use of physical force, which is any part of the officer's body to compel compliance. Chemical force, CS, CN, or OC. We generally don't have CS or CN here at Patton Township, but again, the officers do carry OC. Impact force, which is anything like a baton, a beanbag round, a flashlight, and then obviously firearm force would be discharge of a firearm. And our officers shall, meaning they have to, report whenever they discharge a firearm for anything other than training or recreational purposes. If they intentionally point or aim any firearm at any person, if they take any action which results in or is alleged to have resulted in injury or death to another person, if they apply force through the use of any of our lethal or less lethal weapons, if they discharge OC, or if they use physical force, or they're alleged to have used physical force upon a person, then they must complete a use of force report. That report will include a narrative of the description of the incident, and it describes both the actions of the officer and also of the suspect, the person that we use force on. Each officer will complete and sign their own use of force for basically indicating and documenting their involvement in the incident. Officers must complete this report prior to the conclusion of their shift and submit it to their shift supervisor. The supervisors review them, they'll go through any body camera footage, things like that, to look through the incident. They sign off on them. Their reports then end up going to the chief of police for a review. And then after they are reviewed, then they end up being stored and filed in the accreditation manager's office, and we hold on to those. Removal of an officer from field duty pending administrative review. When a death or serious bodily injury has resulted from an officer's use of force, that officer will, as soon as practical, be released from field duty pending a full investigation into the incident by the department. The involved officer will be assigned to an office-related duty or placed on administrative leave. When an officer discharges his firearm for his or her own defense or to defend, to defend another citizen, a psychological evaluation on the officer will be conducted by a licensed psychologist of the department's choosing, and the officer will not return to full duty until the examination or follow-up treatment is completed. Again, some weapons and ammunition approved for use, less lethal weapons, again, are the OC, the batons, the taser, beanbag projectiles, and then what we consider weapons of last resort. Could be that the officer is writing a citation and all of a sudden is attacked and has to use his metal clipboard to protect himself, as a flashlight would be another example. Lethal weapons approved, the to be issued and carried or utilized. Each officer is issued a duty handgun, and they have access to shotgun and rifle. And we have one rifle designated for destruction of animals, if you have an animal who's rabid or is injured and needs to be put down. Our officers are also required to demonstrate proficiency with the weapons that we carry. They achieve this by obtaining a passing score on a approved or actually meets the standards of the MOPC, the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission. They must also demonstrate knowledge of the laws concerning the use of authorized weapons and also the department's use of policies on use of force, escalating force and deadly force, and they must demonstrate familiarization with recognized safe handling procedures for all of the authorized weapons that we have. And the use of force in service, some of the training that we do annually, this training includes a review of the department's use of force and deadly force policies. So our required annual training for deadly force weapons, again, we have an annual in-service training and proficiency qualifications are mandatory for all firearms approved to be carried by all department personnel authorized to use them. We go a little bit above and beyond. We do require officers to qualify annually, so they do have to qualify once a year with all the weapons they carry. They also have a night qualification, so or low light qualification, so we shoot after dark using flashlights and the lights on our weapons. And then we offer our officers the availability or the opportunity to also go to the range about an additional six to eight times a year. We usually reserve about eight range dates per year. They have one that they have to go through, it's an eight hour full day where we cover all of these things, and then the other ones, some are mandatory and some are optional for them. Annual training that we have for use of force and deadly force, it's an annual review and training of the department's use of force, deadly force policies, and 310, sorry, 1310, up to probably. In our, in our use of force reporting, and then the annual training for less lethal weapons, which Sergeant Stroud can talk a little bit further about this, but showing annual proficiency as a minimum requirement shall be demonstrated as a component of the in-service training for all of our less lethal weapons approved to be carried and authorized by, authorized to be used by all department personnel authorized to carry them. This is another area with, again, with accreditation. The state standards tell us that we must do much of this at least once every two years or once every three years, depending on what the circumstances are. We do it annually, and oftentimes with taser or with OC, we discuss it multiple times a year, not just the one time, again, going above and beyond what the state has mandated us to do. So that's just a real quick rundown of the, of the use of force. Like I said, I just want to give you kind of the highlights to cover the eight can't wait proposals by Campaign Zero, again, that we had generally just about everything already included in our policy, except for, with the exception of the wording that we did add up, add to it. So I don't know if you want to roll right into Sergeant Stroud's presentation, or if you have any kind of questions you want.
Let's take some questions and see if we have any.
Okay. That sounds great. Board members, any questions for the chief?
I have a couple, but I'm going to hold them till after Sergeant Stroud's presentation.
I was just going to ask you about the reports that are filed in Officer Albright's office. With whom are those normally shared, or to whom are they available? Are they electronic or just paper? So this would be reporting forms from any transgression with use of the weapons?
Correct. They are paper copies that we do not share.
They're not public records.
They're not public records.
They're not public records.
They're investigative records, so they're not public records.
Ah, okay.
They can be subpoenaed for, by the courts, but they're not available to the general public.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's the only question I had. Any others on this particular section, or do you want to wait till after Officer Stroud is presented? I can't see other, oops, here we go, I can, yeah. We good? Go on, so I guess we'll ask Officer Stroud to come up and make his presentation. Are we waiting for the slides?
I'm sorry?
Are we waiting for the slides to come up?
Yeah, he's been in.
Okay. Feel free to introduce yourself. Don't wait for me.
Sure. Yeah, in case I happen, my name's Sergeant Stroud, Scott Stroud, Patton Township, I've been here for approximately 14 years, I believe.
I know, I love to get that.
Happy, 14 years. Hopefully, I'm going to try my best not to be verbose and repeat anything Chief Jolly said, but feel free to interrupt me at any point, like, don't feel polite about it.
Sergeant, could you tilt the mic close up towards your mouth?
Yes, sir.
Can you take it off there if you need? No, that's fine.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, great. Stan.
Go ahead and introduce yourself again, Scott.
Oh, sure. My name's Scott Stroud, I'm a sergeant here with Patton Township Police, informing everyone I've been here for 14 years, and I believe I began doing use of force in defensive tactics the second year I started here, I believe. We were kind of in a pinch at that time, and I got kind of thrown into it because I had a background in it as well, and I've been doing it ever since. And then as we evolved with the use of tasers, I believe we got in 2009, I think, that was the first time we employed them here and went and became certified instructor in that, kind of continued to evolve throughout.
Why don't you talk a little bit about some of the training you guys, for use of force, never mind, here we go, you're up.
No, not, it's not on Zoom.
Not on Zoom, okay. Do you want to tell them a little bit about some of the training, defensive tactics, instructor training, stuff like that, if you ever see it?
Sure, so different trainings require different things, so like defensive tactics training, I am certified as an instructor, and different programs require different amounts of time they need to go back to get recertified. So right now, the defensive tactics certification I've had since I've been here is every three years I got to go back and recertify. It's usually a three-day course where you kind of review all the skills and all the concepts, you have to take a written test, you know, just proving that you have a knowledge and understanding of their program and what they, you know, subscribe to. The taser is every other year I have to go back and be recertified in that. That'll be coming up this year. Then some things are combined, so when we talked about the expandable baton and some of the other stuff we carry, that's all combined into the defensive tactics training that the program I go through. And as things come up constantly, we're constantly being sent to different things, you know, I couldn't begin to tell you all the certifications that come up, that I have a stack of them in my file that we're constantly being sent to and doing different things that I, you know, that kind of phase in and out at the time, so as they become pertinent in our career. Excited Delirium, that was a big one for a while that was happening, we were focusing a lot on that. Obviously now, with what's going on in the country today, we're focused a lot on use of force, defensive tactics, and trying to find that silver lining on that cloud right now to say, hey, maybe this is an opportunity for us to look at our program and our policies and try to prevent before we end up in a situation where, you know, we could have done something better and saved someone's life or saved someone from getting injured. That's the one advantage to these things going on, is that it's kind of an everlasting training then, where you see the things on the news, and as much as everybody in the public is talking about it, I'm sure you can imagine how much we talk about it then, so we're discussing what we would do, what we could do there to improve it, would that happen here, how would that happen here, who might end up in that situation, and we discuss it, and we kind of just gameplay it, you know, the mental aspect of what we could do, and that's always helpful. Sure. So what I have is a PowerPoint slide discussing a lot of the use of force and how it applies to us and citizens and how we use it. Some of it may be basic, but I don't want to assume that anyone might not know some of these things, so I don't mean to insult anyone, and I also don't want to assume that people don't know too much. I'm going to try to cover all of it, but if it's good, you need me to move on, or if you need me to repeat, please let me know. So the first thing we have here is, you know, in the Constitution of the United States, our Fourth Amendment right. This is the first area that kind of falls into our category of what we do with force. So our Fourth Amendment right is the right for the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable search and seizures. We're going to be focusing on that seizures part for this conversation. That they shall not be violated, and no warrants shall be issued but upon probable cause. So if we can skip to the next slide, the seizure part is what comes into our use of So in law enforcement, any kind of physical apprehension or detention of a person by way of a stop, arrest, or use of force falls under the Fourth Amendment definition of seizure. So anytime we do a traffic stop and pull someone over, that's a seizure. If we place someone in handcuffs, whether there's different reasons we could do that, not always meaning arrest, we'll cover that here in a little bit, but that's also a seizure. So anytime someone's not free to go, we are then approaching under the Fourth Amendment of whether we have the right to do so or not. If it's a formal arrest, we need that probable cause, and then as it was stated earlier, searchings fall under this as well. So if we need to get a search warrant, we can't just go into anyone's house and take custody of them or their belongings without either a search warrant or their consent. Chief Jolly spoke about the next one, that would be Pennsylvania, he talked about Chapter Five, Title 18, 508, so I won't beat you to the head with that. So some of the cases that are significant with use of force and as they come up in the events we're probably here to talk about today. Excuse me, so the first one is Tennessee versus Garner and Graham versus Connor, there are two pretty common ones that we kind of focus on here. If, we'll go into Tennessee, Garner versus Garner first. All right, so I'm going to try to kind of skim, and I won't read it all to you, but I'll give you kind of the gist of it. So in Tennessee, at this time when this happened, 1974, Tennessee had a state law where it wasn't illegal to shoot a fleeing felon, even if they weren't arresting anyone at that time. So what happened here is that there was a woman that heard some glass breaking in her neighbor's house. She thought it might be a prowler to be inside, so she calls the police. Two officers show up, they go around the back, they see a boy coming out the back, and he stops by a six-foot fence as he runs away. Now it's dark, so the officer reasonably believed the boy to be unarmed. He didn't see any reason to think so, so he yelled at him, police stop. Instead, the kid jumped up over the fence and started climbing over the fence. So out of fear that he would lose the arrest, the officer opened fire, he struck the boy in the back of the head. So this boy's name is Edward Garner, he died at the hospital a little bit later. So this case was constantly controversial for, I believe, about 10 years, I think, where they were going back and forth of whether or not that would be justified and what we're going to do in the future to improve it. So, again, under Tennessee law, it said that if after notice of the intention to arrest the defendant, he either flee or forcibly resist, the officer may use all the necessary means to effect the arrest. Eighty-five years, 11 years, before the Supreme Court finally ruled on this and we came up with a ruling. And what this did, this came up with the standard for us of, which I assume everybody would agree is pretty reasonable, that you just can't shoot someone because they're not doing what you say. All right, so there's a degree of crimes out there, and some don't require the same kind of seizure as we're talking about that others do. So that's when they kind of came up with this, that anytime you're shooting someone, that's also a seizure under the Fourth Amendment, and it's a violation of the Fourth Amendment, it's an unreasonable seizure if you're seizing that person and you don't have probable cause to believe that they're a threat to anyone else, they're a threat to you, okay, so that's what they came up with this. So it says, the court said the officer must have probable cause to believe a suspect poses a threat of death or injury to the officer or to other people in order to use deadly force. So even if they are getting away from us, they're not a threat to us, but we believe there's a chance they might go into the next house and harm someone, then if we can justify that, then you would be justified using deadly force. Graham versus Connor is right about the same time they were coming up with that decision in the Supreme Court for Tennessee versus Garner, we had Graham versus Connor. So it was a gentleman by the name of Detorn Graham in North Carolina, I believe, yes, North Carolina, okay. So he was diabetic, he just got off a long day's work, and through the transcripts, the court transcripts, excuse me, he says that he believes he worked too long, he felt himself kind of starting to go into that low blood sugar. So him and his friend left work. On the way to going back to his house, the friend was very familiar with his reaction to insulin and needing, you know, whenever this kind of happens. So Graham started just pointing, couldn't even really verbalize much, he just started pointing, he pointed and turned into a little convenience store right there. So the friend pulled in, and as they pulled into this convenience store, there's a police cruiser sitting facing one way, and Graham and his friend, his friend was driving, pulled in facing the other way. Graham immediately gets out of the store, runs into the store to get some orange juice. As soon as he gets into the store, he recognizes his line's a little too long, he doesn't want to stand there and wait, so he immediately comes running back out of the store. The officer was talking to someone, the officer was MS Connor. So he sees this happen, he sees Graham run in and come out immediately, they hop, he hops back into the car, and they take off fast. So that seemed suspicious to Officer Connor at that time. So as of what they were trying, the plan was to go to a friend's house down the road to get Graham some orange juice. So they, as they got about a half mile down the road, Connor, Officer Connor followed, and he ended up seizing them by doing a traffic stop and trying to figure out what was going on because it seemed like he had a reason to believe there was some suspicious activity there. Okay, so the next that we go, so it doesn't say here, but what happens is Officer Connor goes up to the car, the friend who's driving immediately tells him he's having a sugar reaction, is what they called it in the court transcript. And Officer Connor just kind of blew that off a little bit. He said, well, we're going to sit here, no one's going anywhere until I find out what happened, thinking that there might have been a robbery or something like that. So he calls our backup officers to go back to the store and check. He gets back in his car while he's calling his backup officers. At that time, Graham gets out of the car, starts acting irrational, runs around the car twice, falls down, sits on the curb. Very strange behavior. At that same time, backup officers are showing up. They immediately go up, take custody of Graham by putting him in handcuffs. They roll him over onto the ground, and from the court transcript, it seems that they did so rather forcibly and they didn't need to, but because he was kind of semi-conscious at that point. This is about the same time Graham blacks out, and he can't remember much else of what's going on. The friend is pleading with him to please just let him get some orange juice, get something to drink. Well, at that time, another friend had showed up, he lived right down the road, and he went back to the store to get orange juice. So as Graham becomes a little bit more conscious, he starts kind of trying to tell them that he has a diabetic card in his pocket. He's telling them to look at the card, it'll explain what's going on. The officers don't want to listen to him, they pick him up, slam him onto the hood of the car. In doing so, they ended up breaking his foot at one point, they injured his shoulder when they all picked him up, they cut his wrist because they put the handcuffs on so tight, and I think he had some bruises on his head, I believe so. I apologize, I'm not even up here. Yes, okay. So then, at that point, a friend comes down with orange juice. The officers will not let the friend give him orange juice, they want everybody to stay away, they don't believe he needs it. I believe the one officer said that I've seen sugar reaction before, this is not sugar reaction. So they're thinking he's drunk, which is kind of typical, we see that sometimes in those situations. Well, they end up eventually finding that everything's okay, they get word back that nothing happened, that story was suspicious, so they take Graham, put him in the back of the cruiser, and they take him back to his house, get him out. When they get him out, he's missing a shoe, he's all beat up, here he's missing a shoe because that's the foot that got broken. So he goes into his friend's house, the officer's clear, and when he goes in, him and his friend immediately call the police, and they tell the police to send back officers that weren't there at that time, because he wanted to file a complaint, rightfully so. Excuse me, so then when he says that, it just so happens that two of the officers come back who were already right there. They get out of their car, the one's holding a really long, I believe at the time it's a nightstick, but a little bit longer than a baton, and they said, what's the problem now? Graham and his friend were coming out of the car, they were coming out to get in their car, then at that point when they saw the same people arrive, the friend said, there's no problem, we're leaving. They went right to the doctor, and he got treated for his insulin, then for his broken bones and everything else. So then he ends up filing a lawsuit, saying that he believes unreasonable force was used against him. So this goes through the court, and it goes through several levels of trying to decide was that force justified or not. And that leads us to kind of where we are today in a lot of things we see that are publicized when we're looking at all these different cases, and were they justified, were they not justified? This case is significant because this is what first put in, the idea of using what a reasonable officer would do. So kind of rather than Monday morning quarterbacking it, it's easy to look and say, well, why didn't he do this? But when you're in that moment, you've got to make split-second decisions, so they're trying to say, did they do the right thing at that time if I was under that same stress and situation? And it used to just be a reasonable person, so in civil cases, they use usually a reasonable person, but here when they're talking about officers, they decided to put this in, that you should be able to do what a reasonable officer would do. Well, Judge Rankist actually worded it quite well, let's see if, I think that's one of these, it must be judged from the perspective of a real officer on the scene rather than with 2020 vision of hindsight. Police officers are often forced to make split-second decisions in circumstances that are tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving. Okay, we have the next slide, please. Okay, so that kind of changed everything for us, where it freed up a little bit to kind of show that we need to have some understanding here. It's not always an easy job. Sometimes you've got to make decisions, and you only have that one moment to make it, and it's a hard thing to do. It's nothing you can ever be perfect at. So if we take those case laws and our rights here under the Fourth Amendment, we look, how do they apply to us? So, and you or anybody as citizens, and as myself as a citizen. So we usually have three kinds of intervention we do as police officers, a mere encounter, investigatory detention, and arrest custodial detention. All right, I'm going to skim through these, so we see. Mere encounter is easy. Mere encounter, just we're working, we walk up and say, hey, how you doing, just start talking to you. You're free to go at any time, you don't have to say hi, you don't have to answer our questions, I can ask you anything I want, I can say what's your name, what you did at birth, but you have no obligation to answer me, because that would mean I'm creating some kind of a seizure at that point, and I have no reason to do so. So we call that a mere encounter, you're just talking. The next one would be investigatory detention. So the key word here is reasonable suspicion. In order for something to be a investigatory detention, you have to have reasonable suspicion, like you see someone going to a convenience store, come out real quick, and they take off in a car, seems odd, so that was suspicious. So he was able, he was justified to seize them at that point until he could find out. So sometimes we end up putting handcuffs on people in those situations just for their safety and ours, until we find out what's going on, because it could be valid, it could not, and we always explain that. That's become a habit within the past probably decade or so that officers are really good about, always explaining, you're not under arrest, we're just putting these on for your safety and ours, so that we won't have to worry about weapons, anything like that, we'll check you real quick, and then the situation kind of de-escalate, and it kind of releases some of that tense, tense feelings there. So then the next one is actually arrest. This is where we're taking your freedom away from you at that point, we're putting you in handcuffs, and charges are going to be filed. So the key term here is probable cause, this is just like war. We have to have probable cause to be able to show that there was a crime, you probably did it, we know it, and here's why. So when we apply for a search warrant, we have to have probable cause, we have to say, we can't just say, well, we think there's drugs in there because of the way they're dressed. Can't say, I think he did it because he looks like someone who did something. We have to be able to show why and give all the specifics. So for a search warrant, a judge has to sign off on that, and this is another one that comes in where, like MAP versus Ohio, the exclusionary rule where if we don't, and something goes wrong there, we lose everything else, it's called the fruit of the poisonous tree, where if we don't have probable cause to make an arrest, and I arrest someone for DUI and then just so happens I go through their trunk and there's dead bodies in there, I lose all that if I wasn't justified in the DUI to begin with. Okay, so it's really important that we kind of follow these standards and we train constantly for these type of things. Yep, we can skip to the next one, please. So, how does that apply to us during our job, and again, why we kind of see ourselves here today, is we're trying to predict behaviors. So you're dealing with people, and you're trying to figure out how are they going to respond? So very rarely do you ever say to someone, okay, sir, I need you to turn around, put your hands behind your back, and they just do it. That's very rare. I don't know that I would either. Again, if I'm using a reasonable expectation of looking back on something, I would probably have some questions, like, wait, what is going on? Am I going to jail, am I not going to jail? So you have to understand in that moment that no one's going to do perfect, but are they actually complying or are they stalling? Are they waiting till you get close so they can try to hit you and take off? Things we have to decide. So we've got to judge their behavior, what they're saying, how they're acting, and try to determine what's the best course of action from there. So here's our difficulties we have, is what sort of behaviors are possible threat indicators? People are naturally anxious when they deal with us, they're probably going to maybe be shaking, maybe seem suspect, maybe seem like they can't get clear thoughts, but that could just be nerves and anxiety, which is typical. Or it could be they're hiding someone, it could be they have a warrant for them, it could be they killed a police officer, who knows? So we've got to take all that into consideration. And then just because they do comply, we don't know if they're just holding off to a later date. So one of the things that comes up a lot of times is, again, sometimes people are insulted when we, if you complete a traffic stop, you say, I'm sure you don't have any plans of doing anything, but I need you to stay in your car, and can you keep your hands where I can see them? It's not meant to be insulting, it's again, just trying to ensure the safety of them and us, because the less I have to stress and worry about what they're... the less I have to stress and worry about what their hands might be doing, then the safer it is. So if I can, if the hands are in a good place, and we can agree to come together on there, that makes it safer, and the situation can end peacefully and much quicker, easier, so. You can't just go by looks and everything, so we always say, what does a person willing or wanting to harm or kill an officer look like? There's many, I mean, you can't even begin to categorize. All different ages, all, you know, different sex, um, different poverty, wealthy, ethnic, racial, there's, there's no way to categorize it and say anything that's, the job would be so much easier if it was, but we just don't know. Um, so we usually kind of find that their behaviors fall into one of these three categories, either they're usually compliant with what we say, which means we give them a directive and they do it, works out well. There either is resistance, and we usually fall resistance into two categories where they're, they're, um, like active resistant or passive resistant. So, uh, passive resistant would be maybe like a, like a sit-in, or where they don't want to move. They hook arms, they all sit down in front of an entrance, and they refuse to move, and they're not, they're not fighting us. They're not trying to get away from us, but they're just not doing anything. So at some point, you gotta intervene, that would be a passive resistance. Active resistance would be they're trying to get away from us, again, they're not hurting us, they just want to get away. And then we have aggressive attack, that's where they're trying to hurt us. Maybe they're trying to get away too, but they're also in some way gonna hurt us, there's a risk to our safety. We can go to the next one, we might be able to skip, yep, next one. If there's, excuse me, interrupt me with those questions, I think I just covered this, skim through it, so the next one. Yep. Okay, so, so now how do we train to handle all those different behaviors and all the variables we have to include? So as Chief Jolly, you know, stated, we have a use of force continuum. And I believe the copy was given out, but it kind of states all the options we have, all those, we call them tools a lot. So we have, uh, you know, we usually have it listed, it's listed in our policy of least restrictive to most restrictive. So we start with just our mere presence of verbal control, and it ends with deadly force. And we train enough to be able to be proficient at all of those, that's our goal, to be proficient, and get better constantly at handling each one of those reactions. Um, so here's how we do a lot of our training. There's our use of force continuum. Um, so these are the different things that we kind of see as options, is verbal control, which is just, you know, asking people to follow our directives. Escort and supportive contact, that's kind of, um, like, let's say for those, uh, passive resistors. Again, they're not gonna move and try to get away, but we act like maybe just kind of lift them, and they just kind of stiffen up and they let us, but we just, or we walk them, and it just requires that. Um, chemical agents, it's OC, soft empty hand control would be anything in lines of maybe, um, you know, like joint locks, um, or when we have to use a little bit more force to, again, we're not, they're not resisting or resisting, but we gotta actually lift, and they're kind of dragging their feet, and so we have to use a little bit more muscle. The ECD is an electronic controlled device, that would be our TASER. On-arm striking, striking implement is the expandable baton, beam back, and lethal forcing cannon, so. I have those last two opposite, by the way. But, um, so here's kind of an example of how they would apply, I don't, if, if it makes sense, so really, all you're trying to do here is kind of follow the cross members, and you're trying to see on the bottom part is all our options kind of for reactions, of things we can do. So, um, you have like your social control, your verbal control, and then it just kind of goes down the list, and again, it gets to the very end of the simple force. On the left side. Uh, no, this is just a, this is just a way to kind of think, there's many, many ways to think about this. Um, of how an officer can use the tools he has and what situation. One of the things we get asked about a lot is, you know, so if we look at that long list of force continuum, how do we employ those? Do we have to go through each and every one? Right, so if I pull up on scene and there's a guy pointing a gun to me, a gun at me, do I have to say, go through, sir, please stop, I'm the police? Then try soft empty hand control, and then try, no, we don't have to do that, right, so you can go anywhere. So we gotta try to streamline, streamline that to be effective. So if you see the green line going up in a diagonal through the middle, that's the cross, we wanna try to stay on that green line. Which is probably, is gonna be the best control mode we can use. So meaning if I, if we looked over here at the cooperative subject, and it says, alright, their actions are showing us that they're gonna be somewhat cooperative, we're just gonna talk a little bit, and we go to lethal force, we can see when we follow that up, it's gonna be way excessive force where that cross section goes. Instead, we would want to use verbal control. So, um, it's just trying to kind of pair up of what would be the most appropriate reaction, and that can shift at any time. But that's kind of always our goal, is to try to use some kind of, some guys like to think of it as, um, the officer's in the center, and you have a wheel around you, of, there's all your different options. And you want to go to the most appropriate one at the most appropriate time. So there's different ways, but, uh, again, there's a split-second decision as usually. Um, so the training we do, use of force, we yearly, we go over use of force, and, uh, that's not even being completely accurate. It's constant, like, the news is on all the time, we're always talking about use of force, it's always in the news. Um, our policies are constantly getting updated every time there's something we see that could be improved. Uh, so every time that goes out, we all read the policy, it's a discussion all the time. Most of our discussions in the department, even when it's not, we're not doing anything at that moment, it's usually use of force, it's constantly being talked about. So, um, but yearly, we go over all our policies, we take a test, a test on them. Uh, so our annual training we go through for defensive tactics, every year we go through OC training, we go through TASER, um, or ECD. Uh, and underneath is what's included, and so like with OC, we, part of that training is making sure you know how to deploy it, when to use it, and then how to care for the subject after you use it. Um, same with the TASERS, it's how to use it, and then after you use it, how to follow-up control, get them care, and make sure they're okay. Expandable baton, um, two uses, so, uh, I teach using the baton as either an impact weapon, a striking implement, meaning you can hit someone with it, or you can use it to help control joint locks, you can use it as a pressure. And, uh, subject control skills would be like joint locks and carrying and handcuffing, we train that stuff every year. These are the ones that we do written testing on, which is use of force, OC, ECD, and expandable baton. So, um, mobile field force, this is also, I added this in because again, it's kind of pertinent to what's going on with all the riots. Mobile field force kind of covers that, riot control. And how we respond to any kind of unusual incident where there's gonna be a mass police response, and we have to control an unusual or large situation. So, this is a consistent scheduling cycle that we do where it's constantly, always ongoing. And we, because you gotta get everybody in the county to respond, so we all go at different times, but it just constantly keeps working through, and, uh, keep trying to improve how to do that, and how to deal with the different riots we have, and potential riots that may come up. Um, so again, yeah, looking forward, you know, again, we, we very well recognize that, that we will never be perfect. Um, and there'll never be a time where there's not anything more to learn. So we're constantly aiming that, I mean, I can't think of a year that's gone by where we haven't adjusted a policy since I've been here, it's constant. So, uh, which is a good thing. Um, and we're constantly looking at new ideas, so here, coming up in the near future, we're looking to combine defensive tactic training with other departments, Ferguson Township, and, uh, hopefully be able to create, again, safer response. The more familiar we are with each other and we train, that means the more controlled that situation will be, because we tend to back each other a lot. So if they know what we're doing, and we know what they're gonna do, then we can kind of be united there, less chance of anybody getting hurt, the subject included, or anybody in the public, and we can end that situation a lot quicker.
Real quickly about that too, Scott came to me at the end of 2019 and said about making our use of force training more robust. And he had some ideas, um, starting off with something as simple as handcuffing repetitions, you know, getting our guys to do it a hundred times, or however, you know, whatever the standard we decided to set was. Um, but just to go again, above and beyond what we're required to do, um, I thought it was a fantastic idea, I said, you are the guy, go ahead and start the curriculum, which he did. Uh, and then of course, March 15th occurred, and COVID kind of put a kibosh to a lot of, a lot of, you know, use of force training is hands-on. Uh, so it's difficult to do hands-on training when we're worried about a epidemic, pandemic, so, uh, uh, it kind of halted us. Um, another hurdle we found was our schedule. Um, so having two or three instructors, and we have to have two officers out on the road, with sick days, vacation days, training days for other trainings, uh, we found that we were gonna have about a three-to-one ratio of instructors to students, so it really wasn't gonna work out. Um, so that's why we've decided to go ahead and combine with Ferguson Township, it was logical, we're cross sworn, we work with them all the time. Um, if there is a use of force incident, generally, we're gonna be there helping each other out. Um, so that's why we're gonna try to move forward, and here recently, we've started the, the talks with them to, to move that forward, so, just gonna explain that a little bit.
I believe that should be the end of, correct?
Uh, there were a couple, I think there were repeats from others.
Yeah, I think they might have just been, yeah, but I think that's the end of it. Yes, I'll do my best, if there's any questions or comments or concerns, issues that I could address, I'd be happy to. Yes, sir?
Uh, I had a couple of questions, I guess they're more, more specific. Uh, one of them, uh, I just need clarification of what you're, of, uh, using deadly force on a fleeing, on someone who's fleeing, you know, the case you mentioned about the kid who was, uh, running away in, was that Tennessee?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, so the outcome of that was that officers used reasonable, that it was reasonable, the decision to shoot this person was reasonable?
I apologize, I might have been unclear, no, it was the opposite.
Just the opposite?
At Tennessee, at that time, it was reasonable, it was in their, their state laws that you were allowed to do so, if somebody resisted, you could shoot them, it was a felony. The Supreme Court overruled that, and said, no, that, that's no longer allowed, it had, there has to be a forcible fleeing felon, and there has to be a risk to the safety. The public safety, officer safety, someone else, so you have to be able to justify that, so, no, I apologize, no, it's not, yeah, it's not justified.
But I think, I, I can't cite a specific, anything specific, but I seem to remember more recently, even after that Supreme Court decision, there have been, uh, there are at least one or maybe more that was reported in national news of someone running, maybe, uh, resisting an arrest and got away and started running and was shot down, shot in the back. And I'm not sure if the news, well, since I don't remember the details, I, I don't think that person, according to the news report, was a danger to, to anybody, they were just trying to escape arrest. So my question is, is use of force reasonable in that case, shooting that person in the back?
Sure, okay, so, yeah, it's a good question. So it's, it's hard to say, right, without knowing everything, it's something we call totality of the circumstances. So a lot of times when I teach use of force, I like to use the example of a push, right, so I could have someone standing here, and I could just shove them, and I could say, is that lethal force? And we would probably all say no. But if I say, well, now we're standing right next to a highway, or on a bridge, is that lethal force? Yeah, so you change one little thing, and it definitely can change that force. And that's why they put that reasonable standard in there for Graham versus Connor, it's like, hey, taking all the totality of the circumstances that are there, we look at everything, and look at the split-second decision that person made, was it reasonable? Um, and so there has been a lot of those cases that I've seen over the years. Um, the one pretty significant one that might be the one you're thinking of, I think it was South Carolina where the, the cop planted the TASER, but he shot the guy in the back, and that, there was, I, I think there was a gentleman that was recording it from like a little behind a tree or something. And, uh, and that was not justified, he went to jail, so, um, the, uh, so it does happen, right, unfortunately. And, you know, I, it, there's, both, there's justified ones that happened and unjustified ones that happened, so. That was a pretty popular one, it was probably within the last four or five years, I think.
No, I, I understand that, that an incident like that, hopefully, is a rare exception. That, that, uh, police forces around the country are well-trained, just like you are, and, uh, that, that's not a circumstance we could ever, probably won't see happen in, in, in our locality. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention ha- has to do with racial bias. Um, when I was working at Penn State, my job was minority student recruitment and retention. And I interacted with a lot of black students who, uh, came to school here from urban areas, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh. And those, uh, a, a significant number of those students were afraid of police because of where they grew up. You know, predominantly black neighborhoods, to them, the police, uh, experience was negative. And no way would they trust a police officer, even in state college, in our center region. So, um, I'm just concerned that, um, through no fault of our own, we have a lack of diversity in our police forces in the center region. And therefore, uh, I'm curious about the type of training your officers receive when they're interacting with, with black, especially black students who are here. And then they have to, you, you, you could expect that, that if they're approached by a police officer, those students, a lot of those students would be afraid, very afraid, that they would be, uh, mistreated. And, and, uh, so I'm just curious how you train for that, those eventualities?
Sure, um, I mean, there's, I'm sure Chief Jolly can add in too, but we are, and there's always training on that. Um, I, I could really only speak, you know, professionally on my own experience, that's not what I experience. I, I have very few incidents of any problems with being accused of racism or anything like that, I don't. Typically, everybody is, like I said, a little on edge when they deal with police. I can't say I noticed a difference based on race, again, age, anything, it's just the behaviors, everyone's behaviors are different, I haven't noticed anything like that. Um, I've, it's, I believe Chief Jolly might, you know, say the same, but received many compliments to the opposite of that, and, uh, um, which is really nice to hear, and I shared some story where I, when Ferguson, Missouri happened, I was sitting in front of an apartment complex on Viro Boulevard one night, probably 2:00, 3:00 AM. And I was sitting there, and an African-American gentleman came in front of the car, just walked with his hands up in front of me, and I don't think he, I had my window down. And I said, you can put your hands down, sir, what can I help you with, and he came over, and he just said, I just want to let you know that we don't all hate you. He said, he had great experiences here, and I thought that was, it caught me off guard, I was like, I wasn't expecting anything like that, but, uh, yeah, the fact that he went out of his way to do that, and I've, multiple times that has happened. But, uh, we do see it's an issue going on in the public, so we are continually training on those type of things, just again, to be prepared, to try to avoid any issues and be better able to handle those type of things, but Chief Jolly can add more.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and we have heard that though, I mean, not to say that, you know, that we haven't heard those types of things being said around our community. Um, so it's something that we are definitely cognizant of and know that, you know, like you said, it could be somebody who grew up in a predominantly black community and had bad interactions with the police, we understand that that has happened. Um, we pride ourselves around here about, you know, the type of education that our officers receive, the type of training that they receive. Um, we, we are hiring top-notch individuals, generally with college edu, you know, college degrees. Um, we have great instructors, we have great people working for us. Um, that type of behavior, or any type of, you know, racial profiling or anything like that, absolutely will not be tolerated here. Um, one thing that we have, uh, to our advantage now is, is the body cameras. Um, our, you know, our officers' actions are being recorded, um, they know that. Um, but even before we had them, this wasn't an issue, but now, there's, we have a check and balance. Um, our sergeants go in and spot-check our body camera videos. So we don't, you know, if there's an issue, obviously, we will watch that, but they also go in and just watch videos, just to see the interactions that our officers are having with the public. Somebody calls in a complaint, then definitely we're gonna pull that footage and, and review it, but we're also just checking randomly, just to see, you know, what type of things are, are happening whenever guys are out there. The sergeants are very, very close with the officers on their shifts, so they know what's going on, generally, they're out on the calls with them. Um, so they're, they have their, their hand right on the pulse of what's going on. But real quickly, just to, to let you know as far as some of the, the training, I'm not gonna have to put the, try to put my, my PowerPoint back in, so I have a couple of more slides, and I was gonna talk about diversity training. I have back to, uh, 2016 documented about what we've done. Um, and generally, they're two-to-four hour blocks, we typically do these at our in-service, which is every year, uh, January to February, we have our, uh, yearly in-service. Um, and this is all the officers in, in center, the center region, in center, in Beltwood and Spring as well, excluding the Pennsylvania State Police, they do their own, their own training, they don't train with us for the municipal, uh, officers. 2016, though, we had a class that was titled implicit bias in good people. I specifically remember that class because, uh, it was definitely eye-opening, I mean, to, to learn, yeah, everybody has implicit, you know, bias, so it's, you know, for, I think a lot of officers kind of had an aha moment that, oh, wow, you know, it's something you may not realize, but guess what, it's inside you. And it's something that you need to try to be cognizant of and to realize, so that was a fantastic class back in 2016, we had that. 2017, uh, we had a mental health act review and, uh, class on procedural justice. 2018, we had a class on procedural justice. 2018, we had a class on procedural justice de- escalation techniques, bias and hate crimes, which was put on by Sergeant Slaton, who was here after the Osazi incident, he was here to help our community, kind of try to mend, mend together a little bit. Cultural Diversity II, The Battle with Moses People, and Immigration 101. In 2019, we had Cultural Competency, Cracking Class in Culture Code for Law Enforcement.
Hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
You lost me.
Do you have the?
My, my internet dropped.
Okay. Where'd you lose me at, 2017?
Okay, I'm back.
We back?
Sorry, we had a little internet issue there, so, go ahead.
Everybody hear us again? Okay, all right. So, I think we were right around 2018, we'll start there again, procedural justice, de-escalation techniques, bias and hate crimes, cultural diversity II, The Battle with Moses People, and Immigration 101. In 2019, we had a Cultural Competency, Cracking the Class in Culture Code for Law Enforcement, Surviving Verbal Decon-, I'm sorry, Surviving Verbal Conflict, De-escalation for Law Enforcement. And then just this past year, again, in January, February, we had Class on Diversity, Intersectionality, and Enhancing Cross-Cultural Communication, and then also a Class on Autism Awareness for Law Enforcement. We also participated in the Diversity Conference that usually Penn State hosts, they haven't had it, they didn't, weren't able to have it this year. And then also, most of our officers are trained in Crisis Intervention Team, CIT, which does have a cultural diversity block in it, dealing with basic de-escalation strategies, dealing with the difficulty encounters, basic verbal interactions, among others. So, so we do receive a lot of training as far as bias, diversity, and, and deal with those, those types of things to help us address, address those, those concerns that people have, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, I should clarify, when I said I don't experience, I meant, we all experience it in the begin, like, like I was sorting through the PowerPoints like that, we're, we're all, we're trying to judge their behaviors, if anybody we're dealing with, and they're trying to judge ours, so we all assume that. So, there's always iffy in the beginning, the, the thing that we see most often is by the end, it's always a, usually peaceful end to whatever we're there. I would say, I'm guessing by 98% of the calls we handle, usually end up with just, almost like a mere encounter, it's a comply, "Hey, we had a report of this, can you turn down the music?" "Sure, thank you very much, we don't have to come back," and everything kind of goes smooth and we just have a conversation. We're very fortunate to, I feel very fortunate to be an officer here, that, we have a great relationship, it seems, amongst each other because we are each other, we live in a community as well. So, there are those moments where, you know, you're trying to read each other, but typically, it's, we're very fortunate and pleased and perhaps it's, I mean, actually, there's a lot of training we go through, which is good that it's always brought up, and I'm sure that has definitely helped for us to be able to relate and interact and communicate with each other and all varying variables that are there.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I, I have a procedural question to ask about the content of the meeting on July 1st. I have a lot of questions that were spurred by reading some of the policies, I've shared them with, I think I shared them with you.
You sent them to me and I sent them to the chief.
Sent them to the chief. I didn't get them until this afternoon, I figured. And so, I don't, and they could be involved lengthy answers or thoughtful discussion of some length. Are we going to proceed with questions now, are we going to?
Whatever your, whatever your, your preference is, I mean, this is your opportunity to ask questions. If you have difficult questions, this is the forum that they probably should be asked in.
And so, that we reserved the July 1st date in case we needed it?
Yes.
Okay, I, I had forgotten that and couldn't remember.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we've received a lot of information today, you may have questions about some of it, how it relates to things you've seen in the news and things like that. You know, I would say, let's, let's really try to wrap up around 6 o'clock tonight.
That's what I was thinking.
About 15 minutes and then come back at, on July 1st.
15 minutes left.
Exactly, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I know, we do have one member of the public here in the audience who had sent in some comments and questions also, if you'd like, you can bring Mr. Jones up, it is Jones, Mr. Jones.
And I apologize, I think I called you Johnson or Jackson or something. It's Ben Jones. Why don't we hear from you, since you're here, and then we'll see where we look at 5 to 6? My sense is that we'll continue, I think this has been a fantastic.
Yeah, and I, and I would just suggest maybe.
Silver lining, as Officer Stroud called it, yeah.
Yeah, we come back on July 1st, maybe talk a little bit more about the de-escalation and some of those techniques. Scott showed us the graph that were removed from, you know, from the, from the lower left to the upper right.
Right, exactly.
And de-escalation, you're trying to move back down that, back down that.
Right.
That line, and, and I think we can talk a little bit more about that, how that de-escalation interacts with the continuum of force. With that, I'll be quiet.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but one, real quickly, one thing I did want to mention too, that we failed to, that Scott and I both failed to, to bring up, as far as use of force, so, I will let you know, the last time we deployed OC or pepper spray was in September of 2016. The last time we used a taser was in September of 2016. So, for about four years, we have not used any of our less legal weapons, just so you're aware.
And can I ask real quick before, Spencer, what is the purview, again, the geographic area that, because we coordinate with the borough, so we're, we're on call to help out the borough, Bollesburg College, but, but mainly the policing activities in Patton Township?
So, this is just for, just for Patton Township?
Just for Patton, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
My name's Ben Jones, I live here in the township, researcher and focused on police ethics, among other things. First, thank you, Chief Jolly, for coming and presenting, that's very valuable information also, Sergeant Stroud. Thank you Board of Supervisors for having this session, I think it's very important. So, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. One is a question about training on tactical withdrawal, and so the idea that if, you know, someone has a knife or a club and is coming at you, are officers trained to, you know, stand their ground and, you know, use lethal force if they think their life is in danger? Or is there training on getting out of the way, creating cover and distance to, you know, protect life in that situation? The one reason I ask that is a couple, about a year and a half ago, had a chance to do the Center, Center County Citizens Police Academy here in the county, which was put on by various law enforcement agencies. Very well-done, very informative, was very eye-opening in understanding the challenges that police officers go through. The one thing that did sort of stand out a bit that I, I wasn't completely comfortable with, one of the sessions was the simulator, where you go in and basically you're standing in front of a screen and there are, you know, suspects and do they have a weapon or don't have a weapon, you have to make split-second decisions on how to act. Very challenging to sort of, you know, it's just, you're just looking at a screen, but it nonetheless drives home the challenges that officers face. But sort of what was communicated was the idea that, you know, okay, if someone's charging at you at a knife, you know, you only hit there within 21 feet, you need to shoot. And it's known as the 21-foot rule. And I think that's come under a lot of criticism in terms of the scientific validity of it and, and there, especially organizations like the Police Executive Research Forum and others have raised questions about that. So, I just had a question, my, my question is, you know, how did, how does tactical withdrawal fit into the training that officers receive? I have other, should I just go through them or go one by one or?
I would go through them and we, we may invite you to come back on July 1st, I think you have some great questions, depending on your schedule.
Okay.
But, because I'd like to hear answers, and if we need more time, July 1st.
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
The second question was on, does, is there a policy on no-knock warrants? That's obviously been in the news with Breonna Taylor, lethal shooting in Louisville, Kentucky, they've come under a lot of scrutiny just generally because of the inherent dangerousness, not just for suspects, but also officers too. And my sense is they're probably never or rarely used, but I was just curious, is there a policy on that? Other question was on military equipment, obviously, there's a federal program in place where local police departments can get military equipment. Fair bit of evidence that when departments acquire that, that there can be, it can harm community trish, also associated with higher levels of violence by police. Again, maybe the case that this is something that the township never does, but just was curious if there's a policy on that. The other question, and this directly goes back to the presentation earlier, so, there's the standard in Pennsylvania law on when deadly force is justified. And there's currently a proposal in the General Assembly of making that more stringent. And one thing, like, is the, as the explanation was given, so, if someone commits a forcible felony and the only way to affect, to stop them is deadly force, then that could be justified in that instance, if I'm reading the law right in the oars. Not all these conditions have to be met, but if one of these conditions is met. And so, like, if someone goes into the sheets across the street with a knife, robs the sheets, runs out, you know, they're armed, but they're not really an imminent threat to anyone, if officers were to shoot in that situation, I think the reaction by a lot of people is like, that's what sometimes call it a lawful but awful shooting. But would that be lawful, would that be in line with the policies that are in place? And if it is, then I would be, I, I think they might need to be revisited. And I, I sent a link to the, the proposal in the General Assembly and I, I would really like, I think that'd be a good discussion to have. And then, one thing that came up today, in my email yesterday morning, was there's a feature piece on the Tucson Police Department and the police chief there, and how forward-thinking they were and, and some of their work around mental health issues. Today, I woke up in my email and there was a story on the Tucson Police Department and someone who had died in their custody. And the video, it's a pretty horrific video to watch. And one thing that, that, that video got me thinking about is, basically, someone was high on drugs, everything was cocaine, and the police were called over. They tied up, they, they handcuffed him, he was on the ground, and he was crying out for help, and he died. And it's still, it's still not clear whether or not the way he was restrained, if that contributed to his death, but there are questions about that. And there are concerns about if someone is handcuffed in a prone position for an extended period of time, that that could constrain breathing. Even with the George Floyd killing, there was the, he had the neck, pressure to his neck, but it looks like another cause was being on his back and the pressure on his back. So, I wondered, is there sort of a policy on, you know, obviously, like, someone may have to be faced down on the ground for a period, but is like, are officers trained to like, that shouldn't last any longer than necessary? And then my last question, I'm, I'm sorry for all the questions.
They're good.
Had to do with just how mental health warrants and serving those. Obviously, that's a big issue of concern locally because of the Osazi, Osazi, Osagi killing last year. Obviously, that was outside the township, but is on people's minds. And so, just wondered sort of what the policy's in place and, and how the department works with mental health professionals to make those as, as safe as possible. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much. Chief, if you could go through and answer those, some of them may warrant further discussion, but I think.
Yes, definitely. Sergeant Stroud, you want to talk about the tactical withdrawal?
Sure.
So, you can start there and then I'll take, I think I can take care of the other ones.
Sure, I'll, I'll do my best, there's a lot there. But as you mentioned, sure, the Tuller Rule is a very common thing. So, the Tuller was actually an officer that came up with this, where it was a rule that said, anytime, anywhere 21 to 35 feet, an average officer and an average person, that person can get to that officer with a knife before he can step off of that line and pull his firearm and use it. So, Tuller himself said it should never have been a rule. They named it that, but it's never been a rule, it's taught as, to you, kind of as officers to use as judging a distance and knowing that, the point of it was to show that a knife can kill you, all right, even from a great distance. So, keep your distance. So, I know it comes up quite often, but I know, we never train as far as like, because obviously, on the job, you can't say, "Well, that person's about 36 feet, so I should be okay." So, it was mistakenly kind of used as that. And it's a neat drill that we would practice sometimes to see that things can happen quicker than you, than you can think. But we often practice using cover, which would be considered a form of like tactical withdrawal, that it's, yeah, we're always looking for the, I would take cover over firearms anytime, if I could. I'd rather be behind a concrete wall talking to someone that might be a threat than have them 100 yards away and I have a firearm. Give me the wall and be, because it's safe, there's a barrier there and we can communicate. So, that's something that's, you know, often practiced. Am I missing anything there possibly?
Yeah, I think, yeah, and it goes along, again, with the de-escalation. You know, we, we would prefer to de-escalate verbally, again, de-escalation, the whole point is creating time, space, getting more resources, making it safer. So, yeah, yeah, the 21-foot rule, we're aware of it, but we do not train that. I wonder if there's any else?
No, typically, I mean, if we even pulled up on scene and we saw someone have a knife, we would probably immediately probably get back in our vehicles and back away, that'd be the thing, and we'd call for more help and use loudspeaker or yell, but, yeah, pulling our firearm is the last thing we ever want to do or ever do do. I mean, it's very limited times it ever happens, but fortunately, but, yeah, our initial response would be to get distance, because it's for our safety too. You know, because things don't work, obviously, like on TV, where even if the person does run at you and you shoot them, they don't fall down necessarily, they might not, they might. But we had a video, we just watched actually, with a gentleman with a knife that came after officers and they shot him probably five or six times, he fell. And then he got back up and charged and tackled an officer and was trying to take his gun from him after being shot. So, distance is our, is what we need, we need distance and cover there, so that would be a, a common practice, yeah.
And that video he referred to, Athens, Georgia, if you ever get a chance, I'm sure it's probably on YouTube or?
I think we showed it in the, the Citizens Police Academy, possibly, if you were there.
It's an individual, individual with a knife that two officers were there on, in like an apartment complex, and they literally retreat out to like a divided highway, there's backing up, trying to get him to drop the knife, "Drop the knife, we're here to help you," to the point where, yeah, he continues to close the distance, close the distance, and then action is taken, so, yeah.
I think I saw a similar one where they're like, you know, the long, right?
Yeah, they, they probably backpedaled three or 400 yards, yeah, so. All right, you good?
Yes, I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to?
No, I think that's good. Does that answer that question for you? Okay, yeah. So, as far as the, the no-knock warrants, I believe was the next one. So, serving any kind of warrant, particularly a search warrant, generally for us would be a narcotics warrant probably, inherently dangerous for our officers, for anybody inside the home potentially, and bystanders, people who live in residences adjacent or next door. So, I saw, and I think I did see that it was Louisville, Kentucky did go ahead and ban, and banned no-knock warrants. So, Pennsylvania's a little bit different, a lot of, a lot of states require you, I believe even New York, some of the states surrounding Pennsylvania require a judge to sign off on a no-knock warrant. Pennsylvania does not necessarily have that, but there has to be four things occurring or at least one of four things occurring for us to bypass a knock and announce. The first one doesn't really make much sense because it's saying that occupants remain silent after you've knocked and announced. So, that's the first exception. The second one is that we are very certain that the people inside know that we're there and they know of, of our presence and our intention. A third one is if we have reason to believe that knocking or announcing our presence would imperil our safety, if, if somehow, you know, we knock on the door, it gives somebody the opportunity to go get a gun, we expect that they have guns, they might be sleeping, we bang on the door, they wake up, they grab their gun, and we have a problem, we get through the door. And lastly is if evidence is, is being destroyed. We don't, here locally, I've been here for 18 years, I talked to some other officers recently about this exact topic. recently about this exact topic, after the Breonna Taylor incident. Nobody here can ever think of when we've ever even used that tactic. So it, it doesn't happen. However, I would probably be hesitant to put it in policy prohibiting it, because there are times that conversely, it's safer for our officers. It gives them an opportunity, like I said, if, if we're going to serve a search warrant at 6:00 AM, and we think, we know that person sleeps from 3:00 until noon, if we can get in covertly and allow us to get to the, you know, an area where our officers are safer inside, rather than giving them the warning that we're coming, and, you know, give them an opportunity to arm themselves, would be my concern about saying that we could never ever do it. So that's, that's where I would stand on the no-knock warrants. Military equipment, so we actually did participate in, not necessarily in the military program, but the U.S. General Services Administration, the federal surplus, I think it was back in the 90s, before my time here, but we, we did obtain eight rifles at that time. I can tell you that for the last five years, it's been my mission to get rid of them. I've been trying to give them back to them, they don't want them back. But it's, like I said, it's through a federal surplus personal property donation program is where we got them from. The only way that we can get rid of them now is if another agency is willing to take them, or if, if we destroy them. I have gotten rid of four of them, we destroyed one that had a mechanical issue, we donated two to an agency out, I think in Pittsburgh, and one to a corrections agency somewhere else. They will not take them back. So to the point where we're considering just going ahead and destroying them, they want to make sure we exhaust all of our options to be sure somebody out there isn't willing to take the property. So we do have four pieces of property in our, you know, that we have right now, but we're really trying to get rid of them if we can. Don't have any, you know, other than that, all of the property we have here, the weapons we have here are owned by the township, and I don't have any, you know, any inkling in the future that we'd be looking to use that program, for any, any kind of vehicles, weapons, anything like that. So, again, I'd be hesitant to say we never would use it, maybe they have rangefinders or binoculars or something like that, that potentially could be of use to us, but not for, not necessarily for weapons or vehicles or anything like that. And then as far as, as far as the, not your last question, I'm sorry, I think it was deadly force, was that's correct?
No, it was one of them, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Deadly force and fleeing, look there.
Okay, so deadly force, so with the, again, we, we do, you mentioned the statute straight out of the crimes code, the state has, has given us our guidance on, on how and when we can use deadly force. And it's important to remember that we reasonably believe both. So both of these things have to be in play, that such force is necessary to prevent the arrest from being defeated by resistance or escape, and also that the person has, to be arrested, has committed or attempted a forcible felony, or is attempting to escape and possesses a deadly weapon, or otherwise indicates that he or she will endanger human life or inflict serious bodily injury, arrest without delay. So it's not just one or the other, it's both of those things have to be in play.
The, the sheet example.
Right.
Mr. Jones, can I ask you to go to the microphone just so, the folks on CNET were.
For the sheets example?
Yep.
Both like if, has a knife, goes in and robs the sheets.
Yep.
Can't catch him, but committed a forcible felony, is fleeing, those would meet those two conditions, right?
No, because at that point, we, we don't have the information that he's a, he's a threat to anybody later on. If he goes in, pulls a knife, and commits an armed robbery and leaves, and is no longer a threat to anybody in the community after he leaves that property, then we're going to investigate it as, as an armed robbery and go through that process. At that point, I don't believe that we'd be justified to, to shoot that individual.
I mean, the reason I ask is just because like, in subsection B, person has committed or attempted a forcible felony, and then all the other ones are, or did this, or did that.
Right.
And so like, if that first one is met, first part of B is met and A is met, then that would mean that force should be justified.
Yeah, like I said, I, I don't think, in, in our policy, our procedures, I see what you're saying, I don't believe that we would use deadly force on that.
Yeah, I mean, like, I mean, the reason, when the Richard Brooks shooting in Atlanta, when that first happened, the reaction, and so this case, he pulled the taser, he was like 18 feet away, he like shot the taser back, the officer shot him several times in the back. Now, he ended up being charged with murder, but the initial reaction by a number of folks was that this was a, it was lawful, but it was awful. Officer shouldn't have done it, but it was still within the law. And whenever I hear that, my reaction is, well, let's change the law.
Right. Yeah, I saw, I did see the, you know, what you had, had given us as far as the legislative change, potential change, which, you know, obviously, again, once again, we're not, we're not going to say that what we had, what we have is perfect, and if the legislature decides to change something, then we're, you know, we'd be happy to.
We don't have choice.
Let's just say we change it, we're going to change it, obviously, but.
Well, I would, the, the one thing I push back on, and this is in your manual too, is that you can put in place policies that go above what the Constitution requires and what state law requires. So that's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
And I think you brought up, Mr. Jones brought up a number of instances, the ones that he's talked about, of they are now in policy, but the question was raised, should they be encoded in our, as, as an ordinance? And I think the borough is also having that level of discussion, I think, with use of force, which is currently now in policy, police policy, but should it also be in their, their ordinances? So I just, I, I would like to, if I might, suggest that as we're ending this session, especially thank the, the insights that Officer Stroud had of, who's couched this awful situation that we are all dealing with across the country, with issues of social justice and Black Lives Matter, as an opportunity to see it as a silver lining, where we are learning the nitty-gritty of what goes on, and all becoming actively involved in maintaining and improving, maintaining and/or improving. The chief says nothing is perfect, we all have an opportunity to improve from this. And I, for one, see this as my own learning of silver lining on a number of instances this evening. So I, I wish to thank everyone for their participation and questions and thought that's gone into this. And I know my fellow supervisors have put similar time and energy into it, so I'm looking forward to our next session to really get more into the weeds and philosophy behind. I have questions about the whole interview process, I'd just like to examine it in a little more detail.
I think one, and there was one more question, Mr. Jones, that asked about mental health warrants, and I think that's a good place to start.
I think that's, yeah.
We can't, it's not an issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can address in two or three minutes.
Yeah, I agree. Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Real quickly, I can address the handcuff prone.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So our officers, yeah, once we get compliance, there's no more force to use. If we have somebody handcuffed prone, we roll them up on their side in recovery position. Let them, let them allow to have their diaphragm be able to breathe, so. They are trained, yes, pulled up on their side so that they can, they have inhibited, you know, breathing, so, yep.
Thank you for that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I would suggest we just recess until July 1st.
So no gavel?
No.
Right. I agree with that unless we need a motion, which we probably don't.
No.
Okay.
Chair's prerogative.
Oh, good. I'll exercise that prerogative. We will recess until 4:30 on July 1st.